Good morning, everyone. This is the Joint Housing, Water, and Land Committee for Tuesday, March 21st, 9:00 here in Conference Room 430. We have a number of items on the agenda today, just some housekeeping. We do have a two-minute time limit on testimony. We will be a little bit flexible depending on the number of testifiers, but I think today we want to stay on schedule because there is a water-land hearing right after this. So we want to get through these measures quickly so that they can go on with their agenda, and we thank them for hosting us in their beautiful spacious conference room. All right, first up, SB 139 relating to important housing lands. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Hakeem, HPHA, in support.
Morning Chair Hashimoto, Chair Ichiyama, members of the committees. My name is Ben Park. On behalf of Executive Director Akim Wansafi, I stand on our testimony and support.
Thank you. Zuriaki, Office of Foreign Affairs with comments. Department of Foreign and Homeland's with comments. Ellen Carson, individual in support. Nope. Matthew Popovich, Hawaii Yimby, in support? Nope. Anyone else who can testify on this matter? SB 139. Chair Singnan.
Members, any questions? SB 139. All right, Singnan, moving on to SB 865 relating to housing. This is the Aloha Homes program. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Ben Uchujue.
Morning Chairs, committee members. Ben Park, on behalf of Director Akim Wansafi, HPHA, we stand on our testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis Salavaria, BNF, with comments. Don Chang, DLNR, with comments.
Good morning. Ian Hero Cal for DLNR will stand on our testimony, offering comments, and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Tanaka, Sierra Club of Hawaii, in opposition via Zoom. Not here. Galen Fox, Church of the Crossroads, in support.
Stand on my written testimony.
Thank you. BIA Hawaii, in support. Haley O, Hawaii Econ, in support? No. Ted Cofellas, Grassroots Institute of Hawaii, in support. There's a bunch of other individuals testifying in support. Any of those individuals here want to testify on this matter? Any other individuals that didn't submit testimony that wanted to testify on this matter? SB 865? Okay. Yeah, calling a few more. Zuriaki, Office of Foreign Affairs, in opposition on Zoom. No. Russell Suji, DLNR, with comments? No. Kirby Shaw, with comments? No.
All right, Singnan, no one else wishing to testify. 865. Members, do you have any questions?
Chair.
Rep Onishi, go ahead. Who do you want to bring up?
I just yell them.
Hawaii Housing.
HPHA, Ben, come on up.
Morning Representatives.
Good morning. Thanks for being here, Ben. So this program would be administered by you folks?
That is my understanding.
So, we had a previous bill regarding the maintenance of facilities and the need for ensuring that it's safe and habitable. So where in this bill is there a requirement that the transfer or the maintenance, or the maintenance and then the transfer of these properties, whether it's sold to another lessee or it's inherited by a person, the original owner's family, is maintained to a standard where it's safe and it's habitable?
Thank you Representative. So I think there are several sections in the bill where it addresses admin rulemaking, where we're supposed to come up with rules to make it health and safety, health, safety and sanitary. As far as the continued maintenance, it's actually being rolled up into our 10,000-unit RFQ called Kale Momi. And so there's a section in our RFQ that calls for 1,000 leasehold units. And so when we go through this public-private partnership, part of the costs of the program will go towards the maintenance with our development partner.
So it would be like maintenance fees?
Yes.
That the lessee would be paid?
That is my understanding.
But that's normally just for general property maintenance?
Yeah, they're going to have to come up-
For common areas?
They're going to have to come up with a capital improvements plan, but that hasn't been fleshed out yet because it hasn't passed yet.
Yeah, I'm talking more for the individual units and ensuring the upkeep and ensuring its safe, habitable condition.
So I don't think this would be like a rental transaction. It'd be like a purchase transaction. So they would technically own it and be responsible for their maintenance of their own unit.
But it's still a state asset, right?
For whatever the lease term is, after that, then it will be back to the state.
So whose responsibility would it be if, say, an owner dies and inspection of the facility, of that unit, comes up with problems that it's unsafe, it's not habitable, and you guys have the responsibility of then having to sell it? Right? Again. So who's going to maintain it? Who's going to pay for that cost?
So I think there's a section in the bill that actually allows you to give it to your heirs-
Right.
-as long as they qualify for the program. But if they don't, then they have to sell it to a qualified buyer, and that qualified buyer can't own any real estate in Hawaii.
Well, I understand the process, but what if they don't want it because it's not livable? It's not safe?
I think we're just going to have to work that out. We don't know that answer right now.
And you guys are intending to do all of this by rule?
That's what the bill calls for, and if the legislature wants us to do it, then we'll do it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you Rep Onishi. Members, any other questions? I'll remind you that this is a Senate bill, Senate bill from the introducer, Rep Martin.
Has OHA come yet?
OHA, is anyone from OHA here? All right.
Then can I have an interesting for you?
Okay. Go ahead.
I don't know if you saw the testimony from OHA about their concerns about ceded lands being given out for 99-year leases and them not getting their income off that land, etc. But what was your response to that?
You know, I can't really speak for them, and the director's not here, so-
No, no, no. What would be your response as to, from your position, approving this bill and approving this initiative to have access to that land? What would you be, what would your response from your position be to make the service?
My response would be that you, as representatives, have a very, very, very important job, and it's your job to listen to all points of view from all departments and agencies, and I would defer to you, as the legislature did, to decide what you guys would want to do with this bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? 865. All right, Singnan, let's move on.
Thank you.
Last bill on this agenda, SB 1191 relating to transit-oriented development. This gives some funds to HCDAs. Vice Chair for the testimony.
State Energy Office, why State Energy Office? In person?
Aloha mai kau ko. My name is Kiana Otsuka. I'm here on behalf of the Hawaii State Energy Office, and we stand on our testimony. I'm available for questions if needed. Thank you.
Dean Minakami, Dbed, in support. Scott Glenn, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, in support.
Good morning Chair Hashimoto, Chair Ichiyama, Vice Chair Ayu, Vice Chair Poi Poi, members of the committees. Scott Glenn, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We submitted testimony in strong support. We believe these are good projects. We do have a couple recommendations for the committee's consideration, and I just wanted to note that we've been working very closely with HCDAs on this bill, and so any questions you have, we'd be happy to answer, but also we're working with them on this too. So thank you.
Denise, HHFTC.
Good morning Chairs, members of the Joint Committee. Denise Isari Matsumoto for HHFTC. We strongly support this bill, and we will work collaboratively. It represents great opportunity to do TOD as well as many other structures and important work for housing as well. So thank you very much. Strong support for this bill.
Thank you Denise. Don Chang, DLNR?
Good morning. Ian Hero Cal for DLNR will stand on our written testimony and support and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Calbert Young, UH.
Aloha. Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. My name is Michael Shibata with the University of Hawaii. The university stands on its written testimony. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Craig Nakamoto, HCDAs.
Good morning Chairs, Hashimoto and Ichiyama, and Vice Chairs Ayu and Poi Poi. Craig Nakamoto, Executive Director of Hawaii Community Development Authority. You know, this bill really represents a significant investment, I believe, if it's passed, in TOD infrastructure. So I'd like to, you know, thank the Ways and Means Committee for their vision and support of TOD infrastructure and the impact that it could have on housing along transit corridors. With this bill, I think the key for this bill is going to be, we're going to, we're going to try to do, as HCDAs, try to do as many of these projects as we can do. However, you know, with the timing of the funds, with the priority of these projects, and other timing issues, you know, I think we're going to have to look at working with other agencies such as UH West Oahu, DAGs, OPSD, HHFTC, and consider, after reviewing these projects in depth, maybe delegating some of these projects to them. When I talk about delegation, I'm talking about delegation, not abdication. HCDAs would still be responsible and accountable for these projects. We coordinate the delegation, the transfer of these projects, and report back to the legislature periodically on, or annually, on the progress of these ones. But I believe that that's, that's the way to sort of implement these projects in a timely way. We'd also like to see if we can work with Dbed to see if we can get a couple of vacant positions to support the efforts of this bill. But I thank you for the opportunity to testify on this really important bill.
Thank you very much. Keith Regan, Department of Accounting and General Services.
Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, committee members. My name is Joseph Earring. On behalf of State Controller Keith Regan, the Department of Accounting and General Services stands on its written testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Eaton, Maui Metropolitan Planning Organization, in support. Kaylee Lopez, AARP, in support. Oahu, MPO, in support. David Arakawa, Land Use Research Foundation of Hawaii, in support. Russell Suji, DLNR, in support. Michael Formby, City County Honolulu, in support. Paul K, Hunt Development Group LLC, in support. Jason Chung, Military Affairs Council, in support. Deborah Lenning, Gentry Homes Limited, in support. Dave Okamura, Hawaiian Electric, in support. Kirin Polk, Kapua Chamber of Commerce, in support. There's a bunch of other individuals that submitted testimony in support. Do any of those individuals want to testify on this bill? 1191. Anyone else who didn't submit testimony want to testify on this bill? SB 1191. Oh, go ahead.
Aloha, kaia ka. Chairs, Vice Chairs, and the committees. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES in strong support. The purpose of this act is to appropriate funds for the Hawaii Community Development Authority for statewide planning, designing, and constructing of transient-oriented development. So CARES just wants to provide comments to identify state-owned lands as a state initiative. However, it should be for consideration to work with the city collaboratively, to also identify city property. And so heart was, is from the city. The construction is from a third-party contractor, and after it's ready to operate, it will be operated by the Department of Transportation Services from the city. So, you know, within this measure, it should include a plan to work with the city and perhaps include a map of infrastructure along with the potential sites for development. The city announced during the State of the City address that it will provide city property for tiny villages for the homeless. So, you know, it shows the city is very collaborative. It just makes sense to work with the city, especially when you're going to need DPP for permitting. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? SB 1191. Chair Singnan.
Right, members, any questions? SB 1191. Rep Onishi, who do you want to bring up?
For Hawaii Community Development Authority.
Great, come on up.
Good morning Representative Onishi.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
In Section 2 of the bill, in the appropriation, it says, "For the planning, design, and construction of the following projects." How do you interpret that? What is the responsibility? These are really general terms.
Correct. I think in the, the way I interpret it is, these projects that are listed from 1 to 23 represent transit-oriented development projects that are in their, in various stages of their, you know, implementation lifecycle. So planning means, you know, to do some planning work prior to design, and then when that's done, and planning requires a lot of community engagement, which is necessary to the implementation process and TOD projects, and then get into design work, and then design into construction. So that's how I look at it. It's a kind of describes the lifecycle of the implementation of these projects. Representative Onishi.
So on this list of projects, have you identified which ones are county projects?
I think for, for, you know, this, this, the 23 projects coming out of Ways and Means was a little bit unexpected, so I think what we're going to do is kind of look at some, look at these in more detail between now and the next hearing, and then kind of identify which ones are sort of county, more county-related.
So in your previous testimony, you talked about coordinating with other departments. I assume those were state departments?
Correct.
But you didn't mention about the need to coordinate with the counties? And the counties, different departments that control some of the issues in this development, right? These developments.
Sure. And I think, apologize for the omission, but we're going to have to work with county as well.
So is the concept here that all state, only state money is going to be used on these projects to develop even county infrastructure? For example, like sewage systems?
So Representative Onishi, you know, this bill doesn't have any funds attached to it right now. Right now, I'm just assuming that there's going to be, this is going to be an investment by the state in these TOD projects, but this bill still has to go through Finance Committee, go through conference, I assume, so I think it's going to, we're going to have to see until this bill goes through that process.
Well, I can just identify that Kial Public Transit Hub has no sewage infrastructure. So, I mean, we can't do gang septic tanks? So you're going to have to develop a sewage plant?
Yes.
And if you want to develop housing. The other problem is there's very little state land around that property. It's mostly private land. So, I mean, I, you know, I don't know how much of this has been embedded in terms of reality. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Members, any other question? All right, Singnan, we're going to pass it along to Waterland for the last measure.
Thank you very much, Chair Hashimoto. This is our 9:05 agenda. We have one bill, SB 1573 relating to affordable housing. And first up, we have testimony from the Office of the Governor, Ms. Nani Maderos.
Ms. Governor, Ms. Nani.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony from DLNR, Chair Chang or her designated.
Ryan Markov, DLNR, will stand on our written testimony.
Thank you. Next testimony from HHFTC. Thank you. And then finally, testimony from Board of Water Supply.
Chair Ichiyama, Chair Hashimoto, and members of the committee. My name is Kathy Mitchell. I'm with the Board of Water Supply, and will stand on our written testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Okay, that's everybody we have signed up to testify in Senate Bill 1573. So anyone else who would like to offer testimony on this measure? Please, Singnan, members, any questions? Singnan, we are going to recess for decision-making. Recession.
All right, coming back to order on our 9:00 and 9:05 AM agenda. Here, we're still in room 430. We're going into decision-making. First up, SB 139 relating to important housing lands. We're going to take the amendments as recommended by the Office of Foreign Affairs to specifically add their lands to the study. We're going to defect the effective date to June 30, 3,000, and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions. Member, any questions, comments, concerns? All right, Singnan, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on SB 139, SD2, Chair elects to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Eslen?
Aye.
Representative Kila is excused. Representative Kitagawa?
Aye.
Representative Martin?
Aye.
Representative Onishi?
Aye.
Representative Todd?
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you.
Waterland Committee, same recommendations. Any questions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 139, SD2, with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Chun?
Aye.
You made it. Representative Ganadin?
Aye.
Representative Hashim?
Aye.
Representative Morikawa?
Aye.
Representative Takayama?
Aye.
Representative Souza?
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 865 relating to housing. Bear with me, we're going to make quite a few amendments to move this bill along. We're actually going to remove the sections in section, we're going to remove a portion of Section 1 referring to Singapore. That's now going to be deleted. We're going to amend the purpose to read that it is to test new methods to help end the housing shortage in Hawaii and establish a pilot of low-cost leasehold homes for sale to Hawaii residents. We're going to move this responsibility of overseeing this program from Hawaii Public Housing Authority to Hawaii Community Development Agency and make clear that the pilot is to successfully sell and manage the leasehold interest. So we're going to test this through this pilot. We're going to remove all references to Aloha Homes and replace it with 99-year leasehold pilot program. We're going, within the pilot, we're going to have them select one project to test the pilot on non-seeded lands to determine if this concept is viable as a housing product. And we're going to remove references that this program seeks to produce enough housing to meet demand. We're also going to add in relating to the eligibility of those who qualify for this type of housing, that in addition to the current requirements, we will follow the requirements typically followed by HHFTC to make sure that at least 50% of the project must be 140% AMI and below. We're also going to delete the enforcement section of the residency, which was with, you know, some scanners and stuff, so we're going to delete all of that. We're going to ask HCDAs in their annual report that it shall include the feasibility of expanding the program and to understand the demand of 99-year leasehold projects and whether it should be expanded to ceded lands and if so, including for what duration. We're going to delete Section 7 relating to the positions, and we're going to have this sunset in June 30, 2030. We're also going to remove Item 2 under Current Section 10, which was going to give a permanent waiver of school impact fees. We're going to delete that. We're also going to defect the effective date to June 30, 3,000, and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions. Members, any questions? I know that was a lot, but I think at least it's a pilot, and we'll see what will happen, and they only can select one site.
Chair.
Rep Onishi.
I think you did some great amendments to this bill. I had major concerns about it. I still think though, you know, I mean, having the agency come up with rules on how to manage the property and the program, I think, is really critical to success. So, you know, not knowing what that's going to be, I think, is troubling for me. So with that in mind, I do appreciate all of your amendments. I think they're spot-on, but I'm still going to vote with reservations.
Okay. Members, any other comments, questions, concerns? I think 99-year leaseholds, it's, makes us all nervous, so we need to see if it's viable. I agree. All right, Singnan, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on SB 865, SD2, Chair elects to pass with amendments, noting the reservations of Representative Onishi and that Representative Kila will be excused for the remainder of this agenda. Are there any members choosing to vote? No, with reservations. Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Waterland?
Waterland Committee, same recommendations. Members, any questions or comments? Rep Ganadin?
Thank you Chair. I certainly support the amendments. I agree with the Office of Foreign Affairs in noting that the original name of this bill is a misappropriation of language. I think that as we promote public housing in urban communities like the one I represent, we need to work with the Office of Foreign Affairs in creating a better and broader policy regarding ceded lands.
Thank you. Members, any other comments, concerns? Okay, Vice Chair Hestraf W.
Voting on SB 865, SD2, with amendments. Noting all members as present, are there any no's or reservations?
Reservations.
Noting reservations from Representative Souza. The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
All right, last for housing/wall, SB 1191 relating to transit-oriented development. We're going to amend it, so the University of Hawaii West Oahu, we're going to make sure that that's clear, so it should read, "University of West Oahu, onsite infrastructure for a 20-acre parcel." So we're going to make sure that it's not on campus, it's near that campus, it's, they own it, but we want to make sure that we're clear that that's what it is and what that money's for. We're going to remove the library reference at the Kahului Civic Center because that is actually a big project. It doesn't only include the library, so we're going to delete that reference. We're going to amend Number 14 to, which is the Kapaa project, so we're going to make sure it reads Kapaa Samuel Mahilona Memorial Hospital Master Plan on and offsite infrastructure because I think that was unclear. We're also going to move those specific projects that I referenced to Number 3, 4, and 5, and then renumber the rest of the projects because I think those, particularly the first five projects in my mind, are the ones that are ready to move first, so I want to make sure that they're at the top of the bill. We're also going to adopt the recommendations from UH to add in that HCDAs able to transfer these projects to the appropriate entity if needed. We're also going to defect the effective date to June 30, 3,000, and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions. Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Rep Onishi, go ahead.
I really have a concern that this bill does not specifically state that these- I really have a concern that this bill does not specifically state that these projects should be in partnership with the county. And the county has a stake in some of these projects and they have the responsibility in these projects. So, you know, without specifically stating that, you know, it looks like this is just going to be developed by the state using state funds. So the county does have funding availability to do some of these projects, but so it's one of my concerns that I have in regards to this.
Okay, we just had a sidebar. We're going to add that into the committee report.
Okay, great.
Because I think that's important and we'll be sure to take that sentiment as we head into conference as well.
Thank you.
So thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Member, seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Members voting on SB 1191, SD2, Chair elects to pass with amendments. Are there any members choosing to vote no with reservations? Chair, seeing none, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Waterland?
Waterland Committee members, same recommendations. Any questions, comments? Okay, vice chair, House Draft One.
Voting on SB 1191, SD2 with amendments. Noting all members as present, are there any no's or reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Okay, moving next to our 9:05 agenda, which is the Waterland/housing agenda. Thank you again, Chair Hashimoto, for allowing us to have this hearing. This is our one bill, Senate Bill 1573 relating to affordable housing. Recommendation is to pass as a House Draft One. First, we're going to defect the date to June 30, 3,000. We're also going to add that the Chair of the working group can invite additional individuals or organizations to participate as needed. And then finally, on page four, after line 18, we're going to add a Number 6, increasing water efficiency reuse and recycling for affordable housing projects and developments. And add a new Number 7, quantitatively balancing water use with water recharge and replenishment within the impacted watershed. We wanted to make these amendments to show that we are not just looking for new sources of water, but also that we are going to be recycling, reusing water in order to build these housing projects. Waterland Committee members, any concerns, questions? Rep. Ganadin?
My concern is this working group's interaction with the Department of Defense moving forward. We keep hearing in the news about more issues regarding the Navy's water supply, especially in central Oahu. So I just hope that this working group can work with the Department of Defense, the US Navy, and the newly-formed Red Hill Task Force.
Thank you. Members?
I share the same concerns as Rep. Ganadin.
Any other questions, comments? Nope. Okay, vice chair, House Draft One.
Voting on SB 1573, SD2 with amendments. Noting all members as present, are there any no's or reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Members, housing members, same recommendation. Vice chair for the vote.
Members voting on SB 1573, SD2, Chair elects to pass with amendments, noting that Representative Kila is to excuse and that any members choosing to vote no with reservations. Chair, seeing none, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. I appreciate Waterland hosting and I'll turn it back to the couple out.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. This is the 9:15 Waterland Agenda, Tuesday, March 21. First up, we have Senate Bill 1018 relating to emergency powers. And first up, we have testimony from Ha'ima. John, are they on Zoom?
Aloha, Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Adam Vice Chair. Adam Weintraub, Communication Director for Ha'ima on behalf of James Barrows. We stand in support of this measure and stand ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Weintraub. That's everybody who signed up to testify on SB 1018. Anyone else? Oh, yep, Ms. Young.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair and the Water and Land Committee. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of, just going to put on a different hat, figuratively. I'm testifying on behalf of Kapalama NSW. We are a public safety initiative from the HPD. And, you know, in regards to, we're going to provide comments about emergencies, especially as it relates to medical emergencies, as it is outlined in this measure. So in the event that there is an emergency, the executive office has then delegated the authority to ensure the medical facilities, both publicly and privately owned, are providing care and support. So in our, in our capacity as safety coordinators for our neighborhood in Kalihie, we've encountered a lot of homelessness and crime. So because, you know, we are a grassroots initiative of HPD, we often testify at the city about these things. And we've noticed that, you know, things, if things could escalate to the point of an emergency, homelessness is essentially a medical concern. Homelessness is caused by roots that are medical in nature, such as substance abuse or injuries, right? And the HUD, the federal HUD, defines chronically homeless as those who have disabling medical conditions. So because we have an escalating homeless situation in Hawaii.
Ms. Young, if you could wrap it up, please?
I will be closing right now.
Okay.
Yes. Because we have an escalating homeless emergency, and if it does get to the point of emergency, we're going to need this measure. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to offer testimony on Senate Bill 1018? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, next, moving on to Senate Bill 1332 relating to emergency management. Testimony from Ha'ima, Mr. Weintraub.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the committee, once again. We have submitted written testimony in support of SB 1332, SD1, and stand ready for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Testimony from Department of Defense, General Hara.
I believe in this case, Chair, I am also representing General Hara, who had another obligation. And again, DOD would stand on its written testimony in support and available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Retail merchants of Hawaii, Ms. Tina Yamaki.
Aloha and good morning. We are in very strong support of this measure. We are aware that emergencies and disasters vary and there may be a need to freeze prices for certain items. However, retailers are always uncertain as to how this provision applies and to which commodities. We especially supported the language in Section 3 that require the governor and the mayor to specify what type of goods and products that are subject to the price freeze of 72 hours after initial emergency proclamation. You know, the majority of the retailers during any time of impending or during an emergency or disaster do not gouge our prices. Oftentimes, retailers are falsely accusing us because they're picking up larger cases or higher-end products of things instead of the smaller generic sizes. And I'll be available if you have any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Yamaki. We have late testimony from Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the committee, Trevor Aburzuo with the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii. Will stand on a written testimony in support and echo what the retail merchants had to say. So we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to offer testimony on Senate Bill 1332? Oh, yep, Mr. Nakamoto.
Thank you, Chair and members of the committee. Sorry I didn't, couldn't submit written testimony. Craig Nakamoto, Executive Director of Hawaii Community Development Authority. We are working with Ha'ima on their plans and designs for their facility to be located at Milani. So we fully support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nakamoto.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Aloha, Kayaka Chair, Vice Chair and the Water and Land Committee. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Kapalama NSW in strong support. We just want to provide comments that this is very necessary in case of any emergency, emergencies, and emergency management is something that should be outlined very clearly. And so I will point to an example because it is a very good example. So the Citizens Advisory Commission on Civil Defense coordinates emergency responses within the city departments, but it also coordinates with some state agencies such as Department of Transportation to navigate, you know, the roads and transportation resources. So, you know, they do exercises for emergency preparedness, tabletop exercises to respond to emergencies. And it is implemented through the Department of Emergency Management, which consists of Fire, HPD, Parks and Recreations. And so, you know, it could be for consideration that this measure here could consider reaching out to the city's Citizens Advisory Commission on Civil Defense to collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else like to offer testimony on SB 1332? Seeing none, members, any questions? Rep. Ganadin?
To Ha'ima?
Yes, sir.
Hey, good morning. Just where are you testifying from?
I am testifying from our offices in Diamond Head Crater.
Oh, in Diamond Head Crater, where you discussed previously to this committee where it's in an old World War I bunker.
In fact, we are in the building at the moment on the floor of the crater, which is not hardened against hurricane at all. The Berchheimer bunker, which is in the wall of the crater, is currently in the last stages of remediation for asbestos and lead paint removal. We expect to be back in that building by later this month.
Okay. So you're in sort of a temporary building then?
It's where our resilience and warehouse are located. It's separate from the State Emergency Operations Center, but it's still part of our operation.
All right. SB 1335 discusses the planning and design of a new facility in Milani, Oahu. There was also a bill that this committee heard last week and we heard on the floor discussing a first responder campus or a road to a first responder campus, which would include Ha'ima as a bunch of, as well as a bunch of other agencies. Do you want both of those bills to move forward in the development of a new location for Ha'ima?
As we stated in our testimony, this was a, the funding that's included in 1332 was a recent addition in the committee process on the Senate side. And there are a variety of funding elements, all of which would contribute to our eventual ability to relocate up to Milani. I believe the funding that's included in this measure would address the remaining planning and design elements for the Ha'ima-specific portions of that eventual development. We are partway through the design of our own site. There was a charrette earlier this year to identify the functional needs. So we could not go to construction phase on our new headquarters until the infrastructure elements that are included in the other bill are completed. But the bills are related, but they are not identical. And we, to the extent that they're consistent with the administration's executive package, we would ask that both of them continue to move forward.
So are we passing now two bills that create two new buildings for Ha'ima?
No, sir. One of them would be, the funding in this bill, as I understand it, is design and scoping work that could be used on any future site for the Emergency Operations Center, but it goes to the schematic phase. The other bill would include infrastructure that would serve the entire first responder technology campus, including the Ha'ima site if Ha'ima goes in early in the process. But there is a larger vision for that campus, of which we are only a small part.
All right, thank you.
Members, any other questions?
For Ha'ima?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious if you are also looking at alternate locations for relocation? Should the one being proposed not work out?
We have in the past looked at alternate locations, which did not work out. And much of the work that's been done thus far could be adapted for other locations if, in fact, the campus does not proceed to a construction phase. Much of the early stages of the design involves identifying the functions of our agency, the desired technological capabilities that would enable us to more effectively, number one, weather a disastrous event and continue to provide support to the state. And number two, better coordinate with our partners and ensure that we are directing resources to support first responder efforts statewide. But many of those functional analyses and floor plans could be translated to other sites if that becomes necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Glad to help.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move next to Senate Bill 1136 relating to state parks. And first up, we have testimony from Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee members. Laura Kaakua for DLNR. The department respectfully opposes this measure. And maybe just to summarize in simple language, we acknowledge there's a parking problem at Makana State Park. We fully agree and are already working to solve the issue. And we really want to not have another study be required of us, but just get to the implementation of solutions, which include striping, reorganizing stalls, and putting up a perimeter fence and working in partnership with Maui County to stop people parking on the shoulder. So we are actually of the same mindset as the introducers of this bill that we need to make a change to Makana State Park. And we, one of the main goals of the department, and I believe the introducers as well, is to make sure that there's parking for local residents that's set aside, as has been successful in our existing parks. And so that will be one of our priorities as we move forward in this year of implementation. So we're just asking respectfully that this measure not move forward so that we can just implement and not be given another six-month or year timeframe where we have to do another study. And Kurt Cottrell, Administrator for State Parks, is here with me if you have any other questions.
Thank you.
Testimony from Albert Perez from Maui Tomorrow Foundation on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Chiyama and Vice Chair, Poipoi, and members of the committee. I'm Albert Perez. I'm Executive Director of Maui Tomorrow Foundation. You know, starting in the 1980s, the citizens of Maui rallied and got the legislature to support the creation of this Makana State Park. Nowadays, it's super crowded and as a result, many residents avoid even going. On Sunday, I decided to give it a try. And when I finally got there, the water was crystal clear because there was no development around the park. And there are three wetlands that filter storm runoff. Endangered hawk-spilled turtles still nest there. And there were many whales reaching offshore. So it was beautiful. But I wouldn't have been able to see any of that if the spot hadn't magically opened up, just as I was about to give up. I couldn't even reach the parking lot on the north end as it was gridlocked with tourist vehicles. Tourist rental cars also lined the road outside the park in order to avoid paying the fee. But it's not just about the parking. There are resources there that need to be protected. Makana State Park deserves a management plan, just as has been done for Ha'ana and Waianapanapa. But it shouldn't be arbitrary. It should be based on a study that determines the carrying capacity in terms of environmental, social, and other limiting factors. social, and other limiting factors. And you can solve the parking problem by doing what State Parks is trying to do, is just expand the parking, but that ignores the environmental side of things. So residents should be confident that they can enjoy this park, that they worked so hard to save from development, but also that the resources that they go there to see and enjoy and experience should still be there. Tourism should serve the people of Hawaii and not the other way around. On the state park's website for Wai'ana Pa'Napa, Administrator Cottrell is quoted as saying, "Quality over quantity is our new target in management." So Makana deserves the same consideration, and a carrying capacity study for this park would enable the creation of an appropriate management plan that's not just arbitrarily picking some number of spots out of the air. So I urge you to support this important bill. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. That's everybody who signed up to testify on Senate Bill 1136. Anyone else like to offer additional testimony? Yes, Ms. Young.
Aloha, Akaiakaka Chair, Vice Chair and the Water and Land Committee Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. I'm just going to provide comments to why a study may be necessary, although I'm not saying that the implementation is not necessary. Of course, getting to the bottom of the parking is very necessary, but I'm just going to explain the scientific data to why studies are also necessary. So when DLNR conducts Marine Life Conservation District Carrying Capacity Studies, it is to assess the damage caused by humans or the impact of commercial use. And also, it monitors, documents, and assesses the situation at the beaches. And also, it proposes a long-term management plan to mitigate the negative impact of humans on the health of marine life within the, in regards to like conservation and sustainability. And it also addresses parking and those problems also. So if you look at the Recreation Carrying Capacity and Management at Pu'pu'ke'a, which was conducted by Hawaii Division of Aquatic Resources, Hawaii Coral Reef Initiative, and the Oregon State University, it will be kind of like a model study, and it assesses three beaches, Waimea Bay, Three Tables, and Sharks Cove, and the demographics and activities that differed amongst the sites. And so, you know, there are good things about studies. So thank you for the opportunity to testify and to tell you about the kind of the framework of these sorts of conservation studies. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Anyone else like to offer testimony on Senate Bill 1136? If any members have any questions, we're up to Ganeden.
Mr. Perez?
Oh, Mr. Perez on Zoom?
Yes. Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna ask for Mr. Perez on Zoom. I think myself and a lot of people who love that part of Maui call it just Big Beach. What happened during COVID, Maui famously got overrun by tourists or from, you know, 2020 to 2022. So what did you witness?
Did I personally witness?
You testified in strong support regarding the increasing tourism numbers. So can you tell the committee what happened during COVID when, you know, a lot of people came to the island?
When not a lot of people came to the island, is that what you mean? I think so. There was, it was wide open, you know, and people rediscovered, those of us who are old enough to remember, remember when the beach was empty. I hear stories about people going out there and not seeing anyone. But I'm not sure where you're going with the question, but we definitely re-experienced the beauty and a lot of the wildlife started coming back. I was talking to fishermen who saw giant ulua coming in close to shore. The turtles were nesting. They're not being pushed out of the way constantly by people. I'm sorry if I'm not answering your question, but that's what I experienced.
That's good. Well, thank you.
Members, any other just real questions? I have a question for Mr. Cottrell for State Parks.
Good morning.
You know, I think a lot of folks are looking at the success of the Ha'iana model in terms of management of our parks. I just want to get some clarification. Was there a carrying capacity study done before those management systems were implemented?
No, we've never done a carrying capacity study for any of our state parks. And it's actually a misnomer. Carrying capacity was developed 30, 40 years ago for range management. And the recreational term now that we use is limits to acceptable change or the LAC process. And I think Mr. Perez is, that's what he's speaking on, is from a community perspective, the capacity has exceeded its limit to what the amount of change we want. But for Ha'iana, Ha'iana used to get 3,000 people a day. And when we were doing the master plan with the community there, we simply, and, you know, it wasn't capricious and arbitrary, but we selected a maximum use of 900 as a target. And we built a reservation system that used that number, because you have to have a target if you're going to have a certain amount of reservation-based capacity. And then we factored in patronage coming in on the shuttle, and we've never exceeded the 900 since then. So we've dialed it down from 3,000 to 900, but there was no capacity study. We looked at the patterns of visitors, how they come to K A and how they go into Kalalau. Same thing for Wai'ana Pa'Napa. We had decades of data from our park caretakers for when those lots filled and drained. And we knew the traffic patterns really well. And when we put it out to bid, we asked the parking concession vendors to monitor the traffic and help us design a reservation system based on those pulses. Totally different from Ha'iana, because Wai'ana Pa'Napa is a stop typically along the way of the Hana Highway. So the patronage timeframe is much less. The lot turns over very frequently. Diamond Head was probably the easiest one for us to set up reservations, because we had over 30 years of data on patronage and when people came and went. And we dialed it into two-hour timeframe. That's typically the length of stay for Diamond Head. Again, no carrying capacity study. We had to work with our parking vendors who know the turnover of the lot better than anybody, because they're there, you know, collecting the fees. So we agree that Makana needs the same type of system. It doesn't need a study. We're already working with our current parking vendors to get a sense of how often the lot turns over. I think what Mr. Perez is in opposition to is we are going to take the shoulder parking that's in the interior part of the parkway where people park just randomly, and we're going to stripe it. So we're not adding parking, but if you're going to do a reservation system, and this is very pertinent in the next bill you guys are going to hear, you must have a number of stalls marked so that we can assure that visitors get X amount and that we can always hold back X amount for our local residents. So what Mr. Perez experienced on Sunday, when we rebid the contract, which these contracts come up in December, we're already working with NIC, who is now hosting our reservation system. We're designing a reservation system for EOW as we speak, because we just did a CIP and we took out some of the old parking and added parking for buses to try to clarify. So, you know, just to sum it up, we can do a reservation system, but we're going to do it based on empirical data from our parking vendors and staff. And as we've done for Ha'iana and Wai'ana Pa'Napa and Diamond Head, we want to provide the assurance that no local will be turned away. But we're not interested in adding more people by the surfacing of the parking lot. And in fact, it's unfortunate, we had a comfort station plan in play, and there's litigation against us to put in the comfort station based on inadequate, in their opinion, use of 343. They think we should do an EIS. But we went from an IWS comfort station to a vault system just to protect the environment. But right now, we're still on porta potties, you know, for Makana, which is also one of the capacity issues. You look at number of people that can park and your ability to manage human waste and the ability to take out rubbish. Those are the three critical elements that if you, the management we have in place, if it starts exceeding those elements, then with a reservation system, we can dial it back. So it's a dynamic process versus do a study, here's the optimum amount of people. So does that kind of help?
Is there a master plan for Makana?
There's a planning process in play with the Onoloa Coalition. And way, way back, there was, they called it SPAM for State Park at Makana, and I think that's what Mr. Perez is referring to. But in terms of master plan, no, not at this point in time. But we can do a reservation system without a plan. It's really just people in, people out, how many stalls do you want to save for locals? And then the trickier part, length of stay at Makana is a little longer as opposed to Wai'ana Pa'Napa, because it's a beach. So we anticipate, rather than Diamond Head, there's every two hours, there's slots that open up. Makana may only have three, you know, like morning, midday, and afternoon. And when it's full, when that capacity is reached on the system, then no other vehicles will get in. But as our deputy said, we also need to look at fencing, because Ha'iana and Wai'ana Pa'Napa and Diamond Head have a single thing in common, one point of entry. Makana is a porous boundary. There's lots of ways in. People are parking on the county roadway. If we fence it and have more secured access points, that's an essential ingredient in ensuring that the capacity doesn't get overrun.
Okay, no, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Thank you. I hear the issue about parking, and I know to an extent parking can be used and is used to limit, limit the capacity. Then the testifier earlier talked about it's not just about parking, it's about understanding the resources and the human interaction with the resources and the impacts of that. So do you think that managing parking in itself is enough to mitigate the impacts to the ecosystems and the resources?
That's a great question, and that's the other side of the coin, basically. Well, as the testifier said, he went there, it's beautiful. The marine life has rebounded, and especially during COVID. To answer Representative Ganeden's question, we saw all of our marine resources at K A in particular rebounding with the absence of people. So we've put up rope fences around some of the restoration areas where the wetlands are. I think part of the reason there's opposition to the comfort station is for the potential for affluent or runoff, like, you know, into, you know, what is a pretty clean dune ecosystem, you know, at this point? But it's already in good shape, as we've heard from the testifiers. And I think that not having it expand any greater is going to be one of the key tools to keeping it in its current condition. And the other cool thing about this is we can monitor once we set up the system, and if we determine there are unanticipated impacts disassociated with parking, then we can dial it down. But it's really critical that you pick some numbers, you pick some patronage patterns, and as in the case of K A, we have increased, you know, the quality of the marine ecosystem by going from 3,000 people to no more than 900, right? So I think our total patronage in terms of car space is around 260, once we put in the additional striping on the shoulders.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? Okay, saying that, we're going to move next to Senate Bill 1153. This is relating to Honoluua Bay, testimony from DLNR.
Aloha again, Laura Kaakua for DLNR. The department opposes this measure, and again, it's, these are connected in a way in that we have ongoing efforts. And so we are in the middle of finalizing our management plan for Honoluua Bay. And we actually do see eye to eye with the introducers of this measure as well in that we agree that Honoluua is a place that needs planning, management, and some major improvements to protect the resources. And so where we're concerned here is that we don't want our hands to be tied in implementing measures to improve the resources by having an advisory board to administer day-to-day operations. So I'll stop there. And again, Kurt Cottrell and I are both here if you have questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony on Zoom or in person from Ocean Tourism Coalition. Thank you, Mr. Coon, for being with us today.
Aloha, Chair Ishmura, Vice Chair Poi Poi, and members of the committee. My name is Jim Coon, and I am representing the Ocean Tourism Coalition. And I want to modify our testimony that we had given. Since I wrote the testimony, I had an opportunity to meet with Bill's introducer, Senator McKelvey, and he's assured me that this is a land-based initiative. It's not to include the Marine Life Conservation District adjacent to that. And there's a, there is a reference to that on the first page, where at the bottom of the first page, it says, it said it's threatened, it talks about the runoff of things threatening the health of the coral reef and the Marine Life Conservation District located in the adjoining area of Honoluua Bay. But we would, we would support this bill if there were more clarifying language in there that did separate the Marine Life Conservation District from the land-based initiative here. And we also love Honoluua Bay. We've been very involved in the acquisition of that for the community. We did fundraisers. We continue to clean up the bay ourselves, and we are stewards of the marine portion of the bay, but we have no reach for the land base. And daily, we see people walking on coral, there's no supervision, walking out there. I know there's a lot of rubbish that gets strewn about, talking about waste. Our waste stays on our boats, gets pumped onshore. There's, there are just many issues that we resolve on an ocean access that is likely the most pristine, least-impact way to experience the marine aspect of Honoluua Bay. But again, we would, if we could have clarifying language in here that created the land-based initiative, it would have our support.
Thank you, Mr. Coon.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have testimony from Mike Kelly, Terolani Catamarans.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I basically just wanted to revise my testimony in some degree. Receiving information Sunday night, this would be happening Monday morning to get my testimony by nine. I relatively duplicated my testimony for the House bill that did not progress. And my revision would be based on a similar aspect to what Mr. Coon just said, that I would be, and my company would be in support of this, could it be clarified as a land-based initiative? We think there's a lot of great things that come from a land-based initiative, comfort stations, restrooms, parking, access, there are just many issues. And we'd like to have water-based access removed or very clarified for this to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, next, we have testimony from Quicksilver Charters, Zachary LaPrad on Zoom.
Aloha, Zachary LaPrad for Quicksilver Charters. And I will stand on my written testimony. I'm a commercial user and a recreation user of Honoluua Bay. If there are any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. LaPrad. Okay, next, we have testimony from Riley Coon, Trilogy Excursions on Zoom. Not present, okay. Blake Moore, Terolani Sailing Adventures on Zoom.
Aloha, Chairs and Joint Committee. My name is Blake Moore, speaking in opposition to Senate Bill 1153, only because, or merely clarifying that I support the Ocean Tourism Coalition's testimony, but I did want to add, you know, some language in there that talks about it, you know, being land access and land access area conservation, as Mr. Coon and Mr. Kelly have mentioned. It's a well-intentioned bill that I fully support with limiting this bill to land access or clearly stating it's not applicable to water direction. My written testimony points out some research that shows that guided tours are actually a key to sustaining these sensitive areas. So we would just ask that the bill be modified to show that it's land access as a structure already exists for protecting this, you know, incredibly sensitive area from the water. So thank you very much, and available for questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Gemini Charters, Anita Sweet.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Anita Sweet and I'm with Gemini Charters in Maui. And I also was looking for some clarification on this bill to applied land access only and not the Marine Life Conservation District. If I can get some sort of clarification on that, I would be happy to amend my written testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everyone. We have signed up to testify on Senate Bill 1153. Anyone else like to offer testimony on this measure? Oh, Ms. Young.
Aloha, Akayaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Water and Land Committee, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. Honoluua Bay are part of an area known as the Ahupoa of Honoluua, located just north of Kapalua, West Maui, in Maui County. So according to the research, despite the acquisition, the Department of Land and Natural Resources has squandered the historic investment by failing to allocate sufficient funds for much-needed remediation of erosion and other types of necessary care for the area to mitigate damage caused by illegal dumping, over tourism, crime, soil erosion, and the proliferation of invasive noxious plants. And furthermore, these harms also threaten the health of the coral reef in the Marine Life Conservation District located in the adjoining area of Honoluua Bay. So the purpose of this act is to propose a long-term strategic plan for the management and restoration of Le Poa Point and Honoluua Bay and to authorize an advisory board to manage the funds.
Ms. Young, if you could wrap it up.
Yes. So in closing, we just wanted to provide a comment. You know, you could consider impact fees such as Hanama Bay, which hosts like educational presentations and then charges a fee to the visitors. And also perhaps for management strategies, the city has park rangers. I think the park ranger does like arrests and things also. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Anyone else who'd like to offer testimony on Senate Bill 1153? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill on the agenda, S B 1598 relating to water testing. We have testimony from Louis Hokana, University of Hawaii on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair Ichiyama and Vice Chair Poipoi and members of the committee. Louis Hokana, Maui College Chancellor representing the University of Hawaii. We stand on our testimony in support of Senate Bill 1598 and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Chancellor Hokana. Does everyone, anyone else like to offer testimony on Senate Bill 1598? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, last bill on our agenda, S B 1417 relating to climate change. We have testimony from Hawaii Community Development Authority and Mr. Nakamoto.
Thank you, Chair Ichiyama, Vice Chair Poipoi, and members of committee, Craig Nakamoto, Executive Director for Hawaii Community Development Authority. We fully support this bill. This bill is important for Kalailua and Kaka'ako districts to address climate change and the sitting and design of buildings. We, however, would like to respectfully ask for the committee's consideration in revising the bill slightly. On page, on page seven of the bill, on line 14, there's some language that offers specific design standards. That's in one place. And then on page 10 of the bill, on line 20, again, same language that offers specific design standards. And I would offer to the committee that with respect to design standards for, to address climate change, this language is more, kind of looks at it as a one-size-fits-all. But I think to address this, we're going to have to look at specific situations like what is the design standards for a smaller lot versus a larger lot development? And for that, we would do rulemaking and get community engagement from stakeholders and others and adapt rules accordingly for specific situations rather than have this sort of one-size-fits-all approach. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, next we have testimony from Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in support. And finally, testimony from Katie Curtis in support. That's everyone who signed up to testify on Senate Bill 1417. Anyone else like to offer testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to recess for decision-making. Recession. Okay, reconvening our water-land 915 agenda. Thank you very much again for your patience while we did our joint agendas first. We have Senate Bill 1018 relating to emergency powers. Recommendation is to pass this out as is, as it already has a House draft one. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair, okay.
Voting on S B 1018, S D 1, H D 1, as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Chen. Representative Ganneden.
Aye.
Representative Hashem.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Takayama.
Aye.
Representative Souza.
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, Senate Bill 1332 relating to emergency management. Recommendation is to pass out a House draft one. We're going to defect the date June 30th, 3,000. We're going to blank the dollar amount and insert it into the committee report. Given the discussion and the hearing today on page 11, line 11 through 12, I want to delete the exact location that's listed in the bill instead to give Haimea the flexibility, but still give them the appropriation to do the planning and design. But should an alternate site be located, then they could still use this funding. We're also going to make the same amendments that we did to House Bill 1034, House Draft One, which is the companion to this bill. We're going to clarify that any exercise of emergency powers must be consistent with the Hawaii State Constitution and also clarify the ability of a governor or mayor to terminate a state of emergency. Members, any questions, comments? Okay, Vice Chair, House Draft One.
Voting on S B 1332, S D 1 with amendments. Noting all members as present, are there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members. Next, Senate Bill 1136 relating to state parks. This is for Makena State Park. Recommendation is to pass out a House draft one, amend the date to June 30th, 3,000. We're also going to add some clarifying amendments to the purpose section on page one. And then on page three, section three, we're instead going to have Office of Planning and Sustainable Development do this carrying capacity study so that D L N R can focus on their plans to improve Makena and move forward. And we'll have O P S D do this study instead. Members, any questions? Or Ganneden?
I'm just not sure how much of a precedent we're setting for doing carrying capacities throughout the islands. So I agree with your amendments and I suppose we'll see you in the next few years, how this goes.
Agreed. Okay, Vice Chair, House Draft One.
Voting on S B 1136, S D 1 with amendments. Noting all members as present, are there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, moving on to Senate Bill 1153 relating to Honoluua Bay. You know, I think this still needs more work. I think there's still some confusion about what areas this is meant to apply to, land-based, marine conservation district. I think there's also some legal concerns around the ownership of Le Poa Point and whether or not it is a state park. So given those concerns, as well as I think very detailed discussion in D L N R's testimony, the recommendation is to pass out a House draft one. We're going to delete section two and three, which is the advisory committee and the special fund. Instead, in section four and five, we're going to put the funds into the Special Land Development Fund per D L N R's testimony. And they can create a separate sub-account for Honoluua and Le Poa. We're going to add in D L N R's requested funding and positions from their testimony and put the funding amount into the committee report. Defect the date June 30th, 3,000, as well as technical non-substantive amendments. And hopefully we can continue to work on this measure as it moves forward. Members, any questions, comments? Okay, Vice Chair, House Draft One.
Voting on S B 1153, S D 2 with amendments. Noting all members as present, are there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, Senate Bill 1598, Senate Draft Two, House Draft One. Since this already has a House draft one, recommendation is to pass as is. Members, any comments, questions? Okay, Vice Chair, as is.
Voting on S B 1598, S D 2, H D 1. Noting all members as present, are there any noes or reservations? Voting as is. Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Finally, Senate Bill 1417 relating to climate change. Recommendation is to pass out a House draft one, defect the date to June 30th, 3,000. And we're going to take the amendments requested by H C D A. So on page seven, lines 14 through 20, we're going to delete paragraph 11. Page 10, lines 20 to page 11, line 5, we're going to delete paragraph 10. So essentially returning the bill to the form that we passed it out in, in the House. In the House companion. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair, House Draft One.
Voting on S B 1417, S D 1 with amendments. Noting all members as present, are there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much, members. We're adjourned.